Hi, Kim.
Hi, Jonathan. Hi, Steve.
Hello, Kim.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Kim, I met Jean.
Hi, Mark.
Jean yesterday.
Yeah, she told me she met. No, my mother said she saw you yesterday. Jean is a very dear friend.
Yeah, that was funny. Hi, Mark.
Hey, Jonathan. Hey, Kim.
Hi, Mark. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you.
Ed. Lee.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Ed.
Hi, Kim.
Hi, Chris. Hello, Garfield.
Hey, Kim. It's been you forever.
I know. How's it going?
All right.
Good. Good. Hi, Brandy.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Brandy. How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good, you? Not too bad?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Why is everybody so loud?
Here's my daughter. So, Steve, I can't remember. Do we open this meeting jointly? We... You'll do a vote and then I'll do a roll call.
Yeah. You want, I'll read the pursuant to Governor Baker's to start with.
That would be awesome. Thank you, Steve.
Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, Order Suspending Certain Provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GL Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's June 16, 2021 Revised Order Extending Remote Participation by All Members in Any Meeting of a Public Body. This meeting, the Great Barrington Select Board and Planning Board, will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and our parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Pursuant to Mass. General Law 7C 30A, Session 20F, after notifying the Chair of the Public Body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Beginning of the meeting, the Chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. These meetings are being recorded by the town, by CTSB, by Virtu Edge, and other members of the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the Chair. The listing of agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. So, right now, before I forget, there are 13 panelists and 25 attendees. My goal tonight, and Brandy, please correct me or embellish, is that we will start the discussion on the short-term rental bylaw that the Subcommittee has worked on. By no means is this the last meeting we'll have. I don't anticipate any vote tonight by the Select Board, at least. And I would say that members of the public will have time to speak, but we would like to do this meeting in about an hour because the Select Board has a full agenda afterwards. So, if you don't get a chance to speak tonight or choose not to speak, it's not going to be your last chance to speak. There'll be many other opportunities. So, I will turn it over to two people right now. First, Eric, do you want to?
Yeah, so I had been advised to recuse myself from this conversation this evening, so.
Excuse me, Steve. Can you do roll call attendance, please?
I will be doing that next. So, Brandy, you want to start with yours?
Sure, we can do a roll call. Jeremy Ega.
Here.
Malcolm Fick.
Here.
Jonathan Hankin.
Here.
Pedro Pachano.
You did.
I know Pedro's here.
I am here.
And Brandy Nelson, I'm here.
Okay, Select Board, Garfield.
Here.
Eric is here.
Here.
And will be recusing himself from this discussion. Ed?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
And I am also present. So, I'm going to turn this over to members of the Subcommittee, and I'll start with Lee. And I'd like, you know, I think we'd all like to hear your points of view on this, since you've done the legwork on it. So, Lee, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, everyone. First thing, I filed a disclosure of the appearance of conflict of interest with the Town Clerk on November 2. And this is due to my employment with the nonprofit organization Construct, which builds and manages affordable housing in South Berkshire County. So, just wanted to let you know that that has been filed with the Town Clerk. I wanted to give some context to the bylaw draft that we'll be discussing today. So, I'll just say a few words. I think it's safe to say that everyone around this virtual table, at least, is in agreement that there is a housing crisis in Great Barrington. And the question becomes, what do we do as leaders to address this crisis? And when do we address this crisis? So, my answer to this is that we can no longer afford to wait that Great Barrington has reached a tipping point, and it's time to ask ourselves a couple of questions. One of the questions I was at least asking myself is, are we willing to stand back and watch our local workforce, our seniors on fixed incomes, those of our communities of color, families with kids in our schools, volunteers in our fire department? Are we willing to stand back and watch them be priced out of our community? And also ask ourselves, are we okay with watching restaurants and businesses shut down with staffing shortages due to the lack of local housing options for those that work in the service industry? And lastly, where exactly do we draw the line between putting profit ahead of people? As an elected official representing the citizens of Great Barrington, I felt compelled to take a proactive stance and jumpstart the conversation in addressing the town's housing crisis through the drafting of this bylaw that we'll be discussing tonight. My goals in drafting this proposal were fourfold. Number one, to address Great Barrington's housing supply shortage and issue of artificially inflated rental costs as much immediate impact as possible. Number two, enable primary residents to continue to earn extra money from their homes to help make ends meet with no strings attached, no new taxes, no permit fees, no inspections, or no time limitations. Number three, to tackle the negative effects of short-term rentals on traffic, noise, and community cohesion in our neighborhoods. And number four, to address the impact of short-term rentals on housing inequality and looking at this through the lens of people of color, seniors, and those living on low incomes who are disproportionately affected by the proliferation of short-term rentals. This proposal is a result of hours and hours of research of listening and to reading the concerns of many residents and stakeholders. I studied other municipalities with short-term rental regulations in place, including Lenox, Richmond, Los Angeles, Chicago, Nantucket, Salem, to name a few. I've talked at length with Lenox Town Manager Chris Ketchin about the path that the town of Lenox took in regulating short-term rentals and came out with some very helpful insights about what that town has experienced before and after the regulations took hold. I talked with Granicus, who offers a full-service, short-term solution for local governments in the form of monitoring and compliance software, so I could better understand the issues and the cost of enforcement if this bylaw should be voted in. I also took a deep dive into Great Barrington's 2020 Housing Needs Assessment to better understand the demographics, trends, key statistics related to housing, among many others of hours of research that I did. And I'm very, very grateful to the Housing Subcommittee for allowing me to speak and discuss this with them. So, they were very, very helpful. Just a couple of points, and then I'll give the floor to everyone. As I stressed in the Housing Subcommittee, this is not a ban on short-term rentals. There will still be short-term rentals available. It will just be limited to primary residences. This is a fine-based model rather than a fee-based model, meaning that there will be no new taxes for residents, no registration, no inspection requirements, no permit costs. This is self-sustaining and self-funded. The high fines that are in the proposal of $1,000 a day will act as a real deterrent for those looking to skirt the regulations while also paying for the cost of the monitoring software. In addition, my hope is that any remaining revenue can be allocated for the construction of new housing. For those that argue that if this comes into effect that our businesses, our local businesses, will shut down because there won't be any more tourists, my argument is that residents do also shop in our businesses, and they also shop in our... eat in our restaurants. So, I feel that that argument is weak. I believe that tourists will still come, and they'll have choices of short-term rentals. They'll just be rented from our primary residences. Enforcement, someone mentioned before that they feel like it's a big evil lurking big brother component. Essentially, the enforcement is nothing more than a high-power Google search. And there's no encouragement of vigilanteism or, you know, taking pictures, sneaking around, taking pictures. So, it's essentially just a very, very high-power Google search, nothing that none of us couldn't do. And it's cross-checked with our assessor's data. So, everything is cross-checked. It's not just listening to the software. It's double and triple-checked. So, for those short-term rentals that might be off the calendar because of cleaning or they're renting it to a member of the family, this will all be cross-referenced. This proposal leads to more integrated forms of housing. So, this is really looking at the housing that exists in our neighborhoods. So, these are established houses in established neighborhoods rather than relying on subsidized housing and the taxation that would rely on the building of new construction. A lot of times, because the economy is scaled, when we do that, new units are often grouped together in big housing developments. And it can take upwards from five to eight years to come online. So, this is more immediate, and this really works in an integrated form of housing rather than relying on taxation to build new units. But as I mentioned before, the beauty in this is that any remaining revenue that comes from fines would hopefully be used for a housing fund of sorts. Again, this addresses the immediate housing crisis by putting properties on the market and deterring future real estate speculators. Now, some of the questions that people have asked is data. And I received a lot of good insight from Chris Ketchin, who said that at the time when Lenox went through their short-term regulations, they didn't... They weren't aware of the software Granicus that we had found. And also Air DNA, which is available to anyone that is online right now, which is a free program. So, just today, I took a look, and I found that there's 207 active rentals in Great Barrington, short-term rentals, right now. 190 of those are entire homes. So, 190 homes are for rent as short-term rentals at this moment, which represents 92% of all short-term rentals are entire homes. From those, 80 of those were available between 181 days and 365 days. So, that's 80 homes, which, based on this proposal, would probably not qualify as a primary residence because they were... They're available between 181 and 365 days. So, what I was really trying to do is hone in on how many of the short-term rentals, the 207 active rentals, were primary residences. And although the town is looking into it through the assessor's data, I was able to do a little bit of research today and discover that 80 of those short-term rentals are available between 181 and 360 days. So, if we take that as a starting point, and we say that 80 homes are possibly coming onto market, if this takes hold, just as an anecdote, that's 80 homes that could come on the market as long-term rentals or for home ownership. So, I'm not relying on this solving our affordable housing crisis. This could be workforce housing. This could be housing for seniors downsizing. This could be for, you know, people starting out. So, it's a mixture of, you know, housing coming onto the market. And for those that have short-term rentals that decide not to do anything, they would have to make that decision. Do they just want to sit on the homes and just use it as a second home? Or get some income from it, whether it is that a long-term rental or not? And just finally, just some cost comparisons. If we look at the cost of building 80 homes, if we're thinking about the cost of that versus releasing 80 homes into the market through short-term rentals. If we look at the basic cost of building a home at 200 square feet, $200 a square foot, and a typical 1,500-square-foot home that might have three bedrooms, that could cost at least $300,000 per home to build. So, that's, you know, looking at a price around $24 million to build 80 homes. So, I do recognize that we want to build more housing, and I think that this is a multi-pronged... This is part of a multi-pronged effort. So, this addresses the need to build housing, but it doesn't just rely on, you know, coming up with that amount of cash, amount of subsidy, and waiting, you know, the five to eight years for it to come online. So, the beauty in this is that these homes exist in our neighborhoods. They're integrated. They're homes that could be owned by people that live and work here. And that it does make sense with the economy scale to do it, to focus on this as one prong of a multi-pronged effort into increasing the housing supply. And just lastly, some key takeaways that I received from the Lenox Town Manager is that they've seen in Lenox that traditional lodging has seen an increase in business and investment since the regulations took hold. Now, whether we attribute that to the short-term rental regulation or not, we don't know. He couldn't say, but he thought that that was very interesting. So, this could help traditional lodging in some ways because the focus would be more on balancing that out. And they took a way of balancing their regulations at limiting the amount of days that you could short-term rental. So, theirs is based on a 75-day limit. And you could apply for a special term, a special permit to increase that number. So, that was based on really the tanglewood season and the thought that by limiting it to 75 days, this would deter people that are using it to make a profit, that 75 days isn't enough time for someone to buy a property solely as a short-time rental. So, that's... There's other things I learned in that discussion, but I was grateful that I was able to get a little bit more stats and data since the last time I talked to the Housing Subcommittee. So, I'll stop talking now, and thank you for giving me some time.
So, a quick question? Yes.
Yeah.
Some presentation. The goals that you laid out are not the same as the goals that are in the proposal we were given? Have they changed?
No, no, no. It's pretty much the same. It's just a different way of speaking.
Well, they weren't actually the same as the goals. So, the goals in what we were putting, given the package, those are the actual goals?
Yes, the ones that... Actually, yeah. I mean, if you... Discouraging real estate speculation, I mean, it's just a different way of saying the same thing, Ed.
Okay, I don't think so. That's why I'm asking, which is the right one?
Well, what specifically are you asking?
I don't remember because I heard of some of them for the first time.
Okay, well, what I was saying is that...
No, I got... As long as what you have in the package is correct.
Yes, it does the same. It achieves the same goal.
Members of the Subcommittee or Planning Board or Select Board, comments, questions? I'm sure there's a lot.
I have a question. Lee, why did you reject the idea of a revenue or fee-based approach as opposed to what you described?
Yeah. One reason was that I felt like... Felt that residents are tax burdened. And to add another tax on them or another fee when there... A lot of times, people are renting out their homes for short-term rentals because they actually need the money. So, I felt like to penalize primary residents by adding fees for what they're already doing would be burdensome. So, that was one of the reasons.
So, following along Malcolm's question, though, how... What's the mechanism to make this work, Lee? That's the part I didn't understand from reading the bylaw.
So, the mechanism is relying on this compliance and monitoring software that is used. It's been tried and tested all around the country. This would... We would be able to monitor all the short-term rentals. So, for example, right now, I'm looking at a dashboard, and I can see where the 207 rentals are. So, we would be cross-checking that data with our assessor's data and see if it's a primary residence. If it's not a primary residence, that would be flagged, and that would not be in compliance. And we would send a letter out asking them to comply with a certain amount of time, which the details of that are being worked out. If they fail to comply, then that's when the fines kick in. So, this would be cross-checked with our assessor's data, which would show us what is a primary residence and what is not.
So, if we could just run through like a scenario, right? This is when the Planning Board starts looking at things like this. We're trying to run through scenarios. So, if I decide I want to move out of my house for the six weeks in the summer, go stay with my in-laws, and the system... And I post my house on VRBO or Airbnb. This system says, oh, that's her primary residence. It's available six weeks. There's no violation. So, I don't get a letter. Is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
But if I buy a house down the street and I make that available for short-term rentals, it's saying how many days available versus... Tell me how this part works.
Well, we would check. We would check to see if that's your primary residence. You can only have one primary residence. So, we would cross-check that if you have another one. So, if it's not your primary residence, it would be easy to have that flagged. So, if it's not... If it's your... If it's an investment property or a second home, even if you are a resident here, that would be flagged as not being your primary residence. So, that...
So, it's an investment property. It has to meet two criteria. It'd be a second home and be rented out on Airbnb or VRBO or whatever this Granicus system is checking?
Well, it doesn't just check Airbnb. It checks community boards. It, you know, has 200 points of checking. So, it goes far and wide.
But it's looking for some signal that you're using.
Exactly. So, it would flag it. So, we have a dashboard, and we would set... In their presentation, they would... They would set what's the levels of compliance. So, we would have software that says, okay, if it's not, you know, it would give us a dashboard flagging short-term rentals. And then it would be the town... It would be on the town to cross-check that with our assessor's data to see if it's a primary residence or not. And if there's any question whether that is... So, a definition of a primary resident would be someone that's spent at least six months here. So, if there's any question, we would request this person to come in and show three examples of proof that they are indeed residences, that this is their domicile. So, that could include taxes that show this address, this Great Barrington address with it. It could be a driver's license. It could be voter registration. So, it would be three points of proof that you would have to show.
Okay. I have more questions, but I want to make them for other people.
I have a question on that line.
Yeah.
The fine is per day, per day that it's rented or per day that it's listed?
Listed.
So...
Because you're not supposed to list it if you're... If it's not your primary residence.
We can make it illegal to list something on Airbnb even if you never book it. Nobody's ever there.
Well, if you're listing it, you're trying to book it. So, you're not supposed to be listing it.
Right. So, we can make it illegal to... I mean, that seems... Whether it gets... Ever gets rented or not, they would be violating this law.
Well, the regulations would be very clear that if it's your... If it's not your primary home, don't advertise it. So, why would they be... Why would be they skirting it if they know it's...
It's... I don't know why, but I guess my question is, how do you prove it's been rented?
It's not. It's if it's advertised.
So, this would make it illegal to just list it? Just words on a board are illegal?
Yep.
Okay.
What if you're in between tenants and you have something listed? Does that potentially flag you? So, if my investment property normally has a family in it, but they moved to, you know, North Carolina, and I go to list my property again, is it going to get flagged?
So, it's your primary home that you...
No, my investment property.
Okay. So, the moment that you use your investment property as a short-term rental...
No, I just have it list. I just have it listed for a new tenant. I want a long-term tenant. So, I post on, you know, community board that I have a three-bedroom apartment available.
Yep. So, if it's over 30 days, it's a long-term residence. It's a long-term rental. So, anything over the 30 days is a long-term rental. You can do whatever you want.
I think I'm trying to understand. Yeah, I'm trying to understand how the software sorts through. And can you give me the spelling on the software?
Yeah. G-R-A-N-I-C-U-S, I believe.
Thank you.
Granicus. And I'm on Air DNA right now.
The members of the Subcommittee, Pedro, Jonathan, Garfield.
The members of the Subcommittee, Pedro, Jonathan, Harfield.
Well, the, I, I get two things. I think what, what Ed was getting at is that if you list a property for a short-term rental, you haven't really broken any laws. You break the law when you rent it. I think that's what I was trying to get at. And I'm not sure that there's language in your bylaw that says.
I mean, that would be something, I guess, we could, you know, I asked that question to Granicus in terms of things flagging it. I guess we wouldn't have to enforce it, uh you know, that, that would be something worth discussing. I just don't know why someone would list something without the intention of renting it.
Yeah, it's not about that, it's about the law and how it would work, right? Because you're still not doing anything illegal.
Well, then you get into, then you get into the kind of um enforcement that you're peeking in people's windows to see if, if they're just listing it just to list it, or there's actually someone, you know, renting it. So.
Which I think is my point, and Ed's point, which is that's pointing at my point.
That's my concern, is that the only way to know that they're actually renting it is to peek in a window. And we then have to set up some sort of a court with due process. You can't just say, you're doing it, you're fined, right? They have to be able to um present evidence and appeal.
Unless.
I'm not a first, but I can imagine you can make it illegal to put words on a billboard.
Sure you can, you give, that's, unless that what I was gonna say, unless we add some language to that effect in the bylaw.
Yeah. And and if you notice, i- in the, in the proposal, we have, um, I have a note saying that we are looking, uh that that's going to be redrafted, that section. So there is some um details on that level that we will, so. That would definitely have to be spelled out.
My other question to you was about um comment you made about speaking to Lennox about data.
Yes.
Can you elaborate on it?
Yeah, yeah. So um, so when I was talking to Chris Ketchin, um, I mentioned Granicus and I mentioned Air DNA, DNA for the, the research that I found, and they're strictly using uh departmental rental um lists that uh, you know, all short-term rental.
Department of Revenue, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, the D O R, are, they're supposed to, did I say that? Sorry, I said something else, the D O R. Um that they're supposed to provide when you are a short-term rental operator. So they are strictly using that and uh doing spot checks. Whereas I explained it to him um that we have uh this other uh monitoring software that is a bit more sophisticated and that would really um, that would scrape data off the internet and and have a higher level of being able to cross-check against assessor's data. So.
But did they, did they gather any kind of data before they put together their bylaw?
Uh, just anecdotal. So uh again, you know, there, there's not a lot of data. I mean, it was based on, you know, the feeling that community cohesion was at risk, that, you know, the, the similar to the, some of the um, the same issues that I brought up. Uh they have a little bit of different demographics, I believe, that they, when I asked him, I think he said that he thought they had thirty, and don't quote me this, but he thought they had about thirty percent of second homeowners um in Lennox, and I think Stockbridge has uh fifty percent of uh second homeowners and, and their area median income is is higher than ours. So we have, you know, we, we can't kind of compare apples to apples, I don't think. Um a lot of our residents, I find, uh actually rely on short-term rentals to to make ends meet. Um over there, maybe not so much. So they felt that limiting to seventy-five days um was, was enough. Um so a- and the jury sellout, I mean, it's only been two years. Um the only, you know, evidence, or hard evidence, you could see in terms of any changes, they haven't had any complaints. They've only had two, I think he thought maybe two um uh requests for short-term permits to extend it over seventy-five days. And he did uh mention the increase in um revenue and investment in traditional lodging, which I think was interesting. So this, you know, could have a positive effect on helping our um traditional lodging uh owners.
Jeremy? If I under, if I, if I can follow up real quick, Steve.
Yeah, of course.
So my um, my understanding is that the difference between their law and our, and the one you're proposing is that they, they do allow second homeowners.
Correct.
Not non-primary. So they don't have any data as to whether or not homes have actually uh converted into the market and become available to the market. They don't have that, any information on that, right?
Yeah, yeah. So it, it's across the boards, li- limited to seventy-five days. So um, so the issue is that if, if we looked at, you know, residents here that um, let's say, snowbirds or people that work in camps that might, you know, go away for, for three months in the summer, um, you know, that, that might not be enough time. And, you know, I recognize that um our population might be a bit different, that they really, really rely on that revenue. So that's why I was willing to, you know, not have that limit, thinking that it might be more beneficial to our primary residents that really rely on this income.
Jeremy, go ahead.
Uh, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not using my normal headset. So Lee, um, with the software, is it just, um, so is, am I correct in that it can, it more easily track um listings rather than actual booking? And is, so the software doesn't have an easy time with booking?
Yes, it does. It, it's so, it, it looks at um, you know, calendar. So, you know, it, it, it goes deep. Um so it can look at listings, it can look at calendars. So they, they compare, let's say, on this day, uh it was um listed, you know, the next day it wasn't, or the calendar was blocked. And when I ask the question of, you know, what about the short-term rentals that are blocked for cleaning or blocked because of um, you know, family visiting? So they're able to kind of go deeper if there's any questions with that, or if there's, it's been questioned. So um, yes, they can look at, at what's actually uh booked and rented as opposed to just listed.
But is, so, so what I, mainly what I was trying to get at is, so is the data on like what's actually booked, is that harder to get to than the data of what's listed? I mean, it seems like it.
Yeah, they have, uh, so they showed us um different things that they use. So uh sometimes they have um lately used Google Street View so they can see, you know, outs- outside the house. Um they, you know, have different ways. So they, they showed us various forms of of enforcing and how they monitor.
Before I open it up to the, to the public for citizen speak and questions, any, anyone else from the boards? Please go ahead.
Yes, please.
Yes.
I would like to say, untruthfully, I support this fully. Um I got a letter from, or an email from Mr. Peter Frank, who uh, as I suggested, this might be a little bit like affirmative action. It is not, but the same type of peoples that it affects will be affected here. Um Lee has not mentioned anything about people not being able to have further, their income, as long as it's, it's their residence. Um I am an elected Tom Fish, so I do feel that it's my duty to try and protect the people of Great Barrington. Uh and I think she's had some great ideas and ways to do it. So I do indeed fully support it.
Jonathan, go ahead, please.
Yeah, um, you know, I, I salute Lee for doing this and I certainly uh support the notion behind it, although I have a lot of concerns about unintended consequences. Uh first of all, this is obviously going to be very contentious at, at town meeting. Uh secondly, you know, I'm a, I'm a real estate broker and I see a lot of people who will not buy in Great Barrington because of taxes. Uh, you know, they're open to Monterey or Egmont or Alfred, all of which have fiber optic and also have taxes at a third or half of what ours is. And, you know, is this going to make our town even less desirable? Uh, and secondly, you know, if I'm just, I'm not convinced that if this were to pass, that these units that we would suddenly be banning, as it were, um, would in fact come on the market uh or become long-term rentals. Um, you know, which would be, which would be great uh if they did, but I'm not sure how many, if any, will. And, you know, when you, will, will that offset uh the negative consequences?
I ask you a question, Jonathan?
Sure.
Um, so are you saying that these people would, would elect not to rent it out at all? Like they wouldn't seek money from long-term rentals? They would just sit on it? That they would have the, the wherewithal and capacity just to not do anything with it?
Uh I, to be honest, I have no idea what they would do. Uh I think there's certainly a chance, as was evidenced by the discrepancy between the number of units that are registered with the state and the number of units that appear on these apps. Uh, there are people who do not register with the state, and I think this would probably just drive more units underground.
Well, the beauty in that, at least in the presentation that um, uh I was on with, with Chris and Pedro, um, they are aware of that um underground phenomena. So they um, it's sure, you know, reassured us that they are able to um to do the, the extra research that it would take to uncover people that do go underground. Um but it isn't if you say that, you know, there's eighty homes right now that are being operated as short-term rentals that are being operated out of non-primary homes. Um even if you, you half of that, you know, the margin of error, you take forty, I mean, that's forty homes that could come on the market. I, you know, I have a hard time believing that people that have bought these homes, um, you know, have bought it just solely to make money. I, you know, I think that they would have a choice, that they would still want to make some kind of revenue. So um that they would, you know, move into the long-term rental market, or they would sell it. And either way, it adds to our supply. And really, the, the, the crux of the problem here is that there's um a supply shortage. And this is one way of addressing that. So whether it's affordable housing or workforce housing or high-end housing, there's just not enough housing. And when we have uh real estate speculators coming in and snapping up all the housing, it doesn't really leave a lot of room for, for residents and workers here. So I'm just addressing that, the housing shortage, really. And I have a hard time thinking that all those eighty units, uh people would just sit on and, and not do anything with it. So I think they'll have a choice, you know, they'll have three choices. They could sit and do nothing with it. They could uh make it into a long-term rental, or they could sell it. So either way, um I, you know, two out of three choices is going to add to our supply.
Randy, go ahead, and then Jeremy.
Sure, real, just real quickly in response to the housing shortage, Lee, I mean, the whole reason that the Subcommittee was formed was to address housing issues. And so, you know, I want to echo Jonathan's thanks to the Subcommittee for working on this. You know, I think as a community, we have to take a, a careful look at ourselves because we've had many housing projects come up on the table. Um and we get a lot of community pushback on um, on build new housing projects. And I think we as a community have to take stock of the fact that we have a housing shortage and find ways to build projects that will allow people to live in our community. And I, I feel that that's, that's something we all have to take responsibility for. Uh because a planning board can put zoning in place and the select board can do tax incentives. But if the community is rejecting new housing, then, then we're going to continue to be where we are. Um, just, just furthering that though, um, the Subcommittee has put this bylaw together. If it's a bylaw, it's going to come to the Planning Board for review. Um what I'd like to know though is, can you just give us a little bit of background for the purposes of the public? You guys have been working on, on this and having these conversations for many months. So how did we come to um short-term rentals as part of the Housing Subcommittee's um discussion and and final work product? And did you look at any other ways to address short-term rentals outside of this um fine-based proposal, such as permitting or licensing? And if so, why did those go to the wayside?
Well, I could speak to why this is the first thing that's come up after the formation of this new committee. Um when we first met, you know, I brought before the two new members of the committee um issues that we had been talking about before the pandemic put a pause on our activities. And simply, this was the one that um, that, you know, the, the members of the committee felt strongly about. That's why why it's on the table. Um the, the registration bit, I think I'll at least speak to that. Uh, you know, it's, it's a hard bit and it's not, I don't think guaranteed to, to, to really um be an effective tool. But I will add that, that one thing that we most definitely should discuss and maybe even add to this. Well, I, I don't know if we can add to this bylaw, but at least have a discussion that the state allows us to uh charge an extra three percent to short-term rental renters or rentals that can be used specifically for affordable housing. And our town is set up with the trust to um, you know, to take care of those funds. So I just wanted to add that. I'll turn it to Lee so she can talk a little bit more about um your second question regarding registration.
Uh, yeah, so I was mindful of the article that came up on the warrant a couple of years ago uh with registration and that being turned down. Um and my thought was that in order to uh get this through the voters and and really um stress that this is not to penalize residents that are relying on uh the revenue from short-term rentals, that we're not trying to um, you know, to, to go in on their privacy concerns or, or force them to do something that they're not doing currently. So I felt that because the power of this compliance software was such that I felt like we didn't need to have the, that registration requirement. Whereas a couple of years ago, we weren't aware of Granicus. We weren't aware of Air DNA, as, as far as I know. Um I guess because Chris probably could speak to that, Chris Rimbold. Um so this is a bit different because we have the power of this compliance software and we don't need to rely on the registration. We also have the D O R's registration too. So uh, you know, in some ways, we're, we're just duplicating efforts. Um because short-term rental operators are required to, to register with the D O R. Um so I didn't feel like this was um specifically needed at, at this stage.
Jeremy? Go ahead, Jeremy.
So uh, so I, I have, um, I, I, I want to applaud the committee as well. I mean, I I have been thinking we should have been working on short-term uh rentals for a long time. Um, I do have some concerns about, um, you know, I, I don't know if we can lump um speculative um purchasing of properties together with like traditional second homeowners. Um where they have the second home and they, you know, and they want to maybe rent it out short-term when they're not going to use it. And they want the flexibility not to have someone in there monthly so that they can just lock out certain times so they can come up and break it up. Um, and part of that is like, uh through uh the pandemic, we've, we've seen, um, I think part of the increase in the population that we got were second homeowners that decided to make uh this their primary home. Um, and also as time goes by, I think it's going to be difficult for some of these like traditional second homeowners to be able to hold on to these properties. And so having the option to do some, you know, and maybe limiting that and maybe setting something up that's different in a fee structure where it's different if you're, like, you don't pay a fee. Because I really, I, what you said, Lee, about um the, you know, um uh primary residents that are really uh tax burdened and, you know, just, I've just burdened by um keeping up with their home. Um, I, I, I think that is totally a real thing. And I, I applaud you for not um for, for the idea of not taxing them. Um but I, but I wonder if we should then, you know, further differentiate between, you know, I don't know what we call them, traditional second homeowners that, you know, have, there's, if there's some way we can prove that they're actually using the property as their second home and, you know, or whatever. Um, uh, and uh there's one more thing, I'm sorry, I lost it though.
Thanks, Jeremy. Ed? Thank you. Um, I, I want to say, first of all, I absolutely agree with Lee that I don't think anyone disputes the fact we've got a terrible housing problem. Um, you know, and I think the committee has done a very good job stating the problem. My fear is, given the fact that we have no numbers, um and even the number of how many units there are, I was at both of your committee meetings on this and different numbers were given both times. And tonight, uh yet different numbers. Um we really don't know what the um rental situation looks like. So in, in an absence, we're just telling stories. So there's this, you can tell the story of um, you know, corporations or wealthy investors who are setting it up just to do this and kicking people out of the local. Or you can tell the story of, that Jeremy was just talking about with um, you know, not all second homeowners are wealthy, so this enables them to do it and be. Um, you know, not all second homeowners are wealthy, so this enables them to do it and be part of our community that way. Um, I assume there'll be other opportunities, because I've got an awful lot of questions, most of them about what are the numbers.
Ed, Ed, if you, just, I was gonna say this anyway, so I'll answer that question. After this meeting, uh, Brandy and I and Chris and Mark will plot out strategy to move this along. So, yeah, there absolutely will be questions from board members and questions from the public and comments. We will take some comments tonight, but thi- this is just the beginning, so absolutely.
There's just one, and I assume a fair number of people who want to speak are in the business, they can check my numbers. The median home price is three hundred and sixty, am I gone?
Uh, you're back now for a moment, yeah.
Turn off your video, Ed, okay, well, does that help? So, on a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar home, mortgage taxes and insurance is about two thousand a month. Um, if the rent, that, you know, not counting maintenance costs, major repairs, vacancies, non-payment of rent. Um, i- i- if the rent is thirty-five hundred a month, three thousand five hundred a month. That gives the landlord eighteen thousand dollars a year, or a five percent return on investment. Again, that's if there are no maintenance costs, no repairs, no vacancies, no tenants who stop paying rent and take a year to get evicted. So, I, 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 again, applaud the idea, my fear is this won't do. What we think it'll do, I think the goals are really ill-defined, there's no numbers, how many units are we looking to get on the market? We don't even have that number. Um, so how can we judge how likely this is to be successful, we don't even know what we're trying to do, so I would love to see. More work go into the goals of this, that explains, you know, what we're trying to do. Um, then we can evaluate if this is likely to do it. Yeah, I've, I've got more, but I'll, I'll hold off on that, thank you.
Lee, just briefly, yes, just briefly.
Um, so Ed, thank you for your question, in response to that, um, we do have the data, so. If it's a moving target, it fluctuates, but we know that it's between, you know, the hundred and ninety to two hundred and ten active listings.
Right, but we don't, we don't know how many of them are corporate-owned purchased for this versus second homeowner, we don't have that information.
Okay, can I?
Thing we need to get, is, I, I didn't know this was a debate, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just trying to e- explain my situation. Um, so that is being investigated, and with the data that I was able to find, uh. There are eighty homes, approximately eighty homes that are being rented out. Um, from the data that we see now, um, that are most likely non-primary, and obviously. Um, we can, we can dive in more into those numbers, but even if you take half of those and.
Just made up half, right, you've made that.
It's, it's conversation, Ed, I'm not having an argument with you, I'm trying to understand, I'm trying to understand that it's not.
Hold on a second for both of you, please, but let's move ahead with this with Jeremy, we're gonna have other meetings, we're not having a debate tonight, so Jeremy, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to echo what my other point, thing I forgot earlier, is I, I mean, I sort of said it, but I wanted to echo what. Jonathan had said, is that, you know, we don't really know how many of these um, will come on the market for long-term. Uh, rentals, and that, that's difficult, right, like, that's the thing, like, we have. And we have to make that assumption, but, you know, but we don't really know. And so, I mean, yeah, so, I, I. You know, like, that part is gonna be very difficult to determine.
But the alternative is doing nothing.
I'm gonna open this up to the public now, we're gonna have, you need to state your name and address. We'll give you two minutes to speak, this is just the beginning, so we. Um, you'll have more time at other, at, at other meetings, so we'll start with the first person, their hand up was Claudia Lasley. Just unmute yourself, state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Claudia Lasley, twenty-nine Benton Avenue in Great Barrington. Just super briefly, I just wanna clarify that the renters pay the short-term rental tax, not the homeowner, so I just wanted to clarify that. That was misspoken earlier, um, and really, my question is that, or my comment question is that, you know, I started. As we talked before, uh, I have a company that does higher-end vacation rentals, I started the company basically. Because there are so many second homeowners, uh, home, second homes just sitting empty. And I looked around, I thought, you know, these, these homes could be occupied. Um, so to take that option away from the second homeowner, just, I, I don't see how in the world that's gonna. Uh, provide more affordable housing, and, you know, the, the. It's, it's, and if you switch to thirty-night minimums, or thirty-one night, or sixty-night minimums, I don't know how that also. Uh, provides more affordable housing or long-term housing, so that's my comment, I really appreciate all of the good work. That everybody has put into this, it's super important, and um, just thank you, and let's keep talking about it.
Thank you, Peter.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, hi, uh, my name is Peter Frank, sixteen Lakeview Road in Great Barrington, and I just wanna say that. I think that this is a hugely indirect response to a pressing problem. I think that it's basically uh, low-hanging fruit by trying to go after people who don't live in town. Who actually will not have a chance to vote on this, because they may not have voting privileges, but if the. Uh, objective of the town is to um, create more affordable housing. Why don't they just figure out ways to create affordable housing, as opposed to this convoluted, like, land grab? Um, that you're proposing, where you take property rights of people who are legitimate homeowners, and then. Um, telling them that they don't have the ability to maintain, or, you know, keep their property. Because their um, chance of defraying costs is taken away from them. And it just seems like there are so many creative solutions that are possible. I understand what Brandy was saying, that the community has been um, um, blocking housing. But maybe that you could take um, taxation from short-term rentals and put it into a land trust. Or try and alleviate taxes on some of the people who own these houses, so their burden is, isn't so great. It, it just feels like it's low-hanging fruit and picking on a. Uh, element of the community that can't fight back, because they don't vote. And it's bad, as Jonathan said, it's bad for real estate property uh, values, and I think that the second homeowners. And the short-term rentals are fantastic for the town, I think the town has never been healthier in my ten years of living here. I see downtown totally packed with people, and what is, no one is talking about the effect that this will have on businesses. Where, you know, the amount of business in town is gonna be decreased, rents are still gonna stay high in the, in storefronts. And the storefronts are gonna go empty again, because no, the, the stores can't stay. Stay there, because they don't have the, the flow of people, I just think that this is a completely convoluted. And indirect response to a pressing need.
Thank you. Craig Okers from Lang.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, how are you guys, Craig Okers from Lang, forty-eighth South Street in Great Barrington. I did a little research on um, the amount of um, workforce and affordable housing we have in town now and what's proposed. And right now, we have two hundred and fourteen units that are occupied, and I'll be glad to share that table with you. And there's another sixty-eight to seventy-four in the future, in the next two to four years. And I really gotta applaud all those different efforts that we're doing, and I am totally in support of having. Uh, and that additional tax that Pedro mentioned, that we can opt to put in. On the short-term rentals, and put that all towards affordable housing. We have some great groups doing this now, and that would be wonderful, and the second comment I've got are just a question. No one's talked about what the um, total fees are that are collected by the town from short-term rentals. I haven't heard that mentioned, does anyone have that for the last three years?
We do, and we'll bring it up at a future meeting, Craig.
Great, that's it, thank you.
Excuse me, if I get a, Ronnie L.
It's uh, it's Ronnie L, my name is uh, actually.
I apologize.
Okay, um, my name is Veronica Devi-Lender, I will at the onset say that, uh, I live. Barely in New York City, um, I do have a home in Great Barrington, as well as one in Sheffield. Uh, we split our time, four days a week in the Berkshires and three days a week in New York, so. Um, I think it's fair to say that I'm not a primary resident in the Berkshires, but I would like to say that. First, affordable housing has been a problem in the Berkshires. Uh, that well predates, you know, this emergence of short-term rentals, and it's, you know, it's rapid expansion. I know that when we got married in the Berkshires fifteen years ago, it was a problem then. Um, my husband and I decided to buy the house in Great Barrington because of our love for the community. And the fact that this house was in the middle of a gut renovation and left. Practically falling down for well over a year, with nobody interested in buying it, we bought it, we fixed it up. And decided to rent it out on, you know, Airbnb and have that short-term market, but, you know. I don't feel, I, I don't wanna reiterate what the others have said about the numbers and the need for additional clarity on that. But I would like to point out that I don't know how well you can quantify how much money we actually bring in to the community. We pay close to a thousand dollars a month to an individual and her staff to help clean the unit. We pay landscapers and gardeners every week to maintain our property. We spend over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with local contractors to improve a property that was falling down. We direct all of our guests to local businesses on Railroad Street, to the co-op, to everything that's around. And I don't know how it is that you, you will quantify that, you know, I agree that affordable housing is a huge issue. And frankly, would have no issue paying an additional impact tax, because I would like to see money going directly to affordable housing. But the fact is, if um, homeowner, homeowners like my husband and I, who are clearly not primary residents. Can't um, rent this out as short-term rental, it's a house, it's not going to be affordable rental housing. For someone, it's just gonna go on sale, it's gonna go on sale at a high price point, and um. I think it will be a reduction of tourism to the area. The only other thing I'd say is that in, in the last. Very briefly, on the last call, you know, there was an indication that people like us are just, you know, money-hungry speculators. Just have lots of money and bringing that in, the fact that we bring tourists to the community doesn't just make us speculators. We also contribute to the community, we give money to projects, we give money to charities.
Thank you very much. Uh, there are five more people with their hand up, I will let all five speak, so the next one is Sarah, Sarah Dixon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Dixon, and I live at two fourteen Pine Street in Husatonic. Um, I just wanna make it abundantly clear to everyone that it is not the homeowners that pay the taxes or fees. It's the renters, so having these in place wouldn't impact. Or raising them by doing that three percent impact fee would not affect the homeowners. Um, I also wanna point out that, and I know you said later on, we'll get the amount. But the town has been collecting a short-term rental fee since July first, two thousand nineteen. So that's two years, three months, and I speculate that there's a significant amount of funds available that aren't being. You know, used, or, well, I won't speculate anything, but. I just wanna say that there is a kitty, I imagine, somewhere that could be used to be creative, and like. I just wanna say, you know, we've got the Thornwood Inn that's on the market right now for one point three nine million. Like, instead of taking and restricting people's, you know, current properties. You know, this is just my, I'm throwing out there a way of being creative, and maybe getting the board and the committee to. Kind of think outside the box, and that's it.
Thank you, Sarah. Tony Segal.
Hi, good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, uh, I, Tony Segal, I live at uh, three fifty-four North Plain Road uh, in Great Barrington. Um, uh, I'm sure many of you may know me, maybe not, um, I am a, I'm a local Realtor, just like Jonathan. Um, and I think there's a lot of good points being raised here, but I have to stress, um. Tremendously, I, I, I think we're, we're not looking. We're not thinking as if it's twenty twenty-one, we're all thinking like it's nineteen ninety, people do not travel like they did in the nineties. Um, I can say from my own experience, we are a family of three, we have a young child, we spend a lot of money in this community. Between taxes, schooling, utilities, you name it, um, sorry, that's besides the point, but what I'm saying is. We, we've changed the way we travel, the only way that we travel is in short-term rentals, whether we're in Europe, whether we're in Florida. Uh, the coast of Maine, we don't stay in hotels, we don't stay in B and Bs, because it, it's very inconvenient to the way we travel. And there are a tremendous amount of people that come to this community that only stay in Airbnb's short-term rental, so. If you take that away from people, they are going to move on to another town, uh, I feel very strongly about that, especially in the winter months. Uh, we have a very, very large uh, flow of people that come just to stay at Butternut. I can tell you, my units are full all winter, people that wanna be within five minutes of the mountain, if we take that away, they will go to Hillsdale. They'll go stay in Egremont, they'll go eat at the Old Mill, they'll go eat at John Andrews, they'll eat, they'll eat at Rojan, they'll go to Catamount. Or maybe they'll go to Lennox and go to Basque, which has got a lot of money put into it, they will move on, they will not come here, and, and I, I very. I feel very strongly that the businesses will suffer, um, there's not a lot of locals that can afford to pay two hundred dollars in a restaurant. Like you would spend at some of the places, places on Main Street, it's a very expensive town to do business in. It's a very expensive town to shop in, and a lot of locals just don't do it, so I think the businesses, the local businesses will struggle, I think that the. Winter economy will struggle greatly, in particular, the off-season economy will struggle. Um, people just don't travel like they used to, and we need to support these people coming into our community, because I really feel strongly they will move on, and they'll go to another town.
Thank you very much. Um, people continue to raise their hand, even, obviously, they weren't listening, we're gonna cut this off in a few minutes, but I will. Continue to get some more people's input, uh, Gabriel, Gabrielle Senza.
Okay, hi, thank you, um, yeah, there's so much to, that goes into a, a situation like this, and. And um, there's so many points, I'm really glad this isn't like the once-and-done discussion about it. And I really like that, there's a lot of discussion about how can we think about this creatively, how can we look at the long-term? Effects, how can we look at the unintended consequences of decisions that are being made? Um, you know, I'm sure Lee's turned up a lot of, of really good research and studies. Um, in the U S, and then also, if you look at what's happened in Europe, it's just massive amounts of. Very difficult situations where people have lost their homes, I'll keep the conversation based on Great Barrington, because that's what we're talking about. But I would encourage all of us, or anyone who's listening and thinking about this, to, to expand our, our reach. In terms of looking at other scenarios, what's worked, what hasn't worked, what are the consequences? So, the points that I'd just like to make tonight. One of the most important things, and I've heard a few people mention this, like, the restaurants and the businesses will go, um. You know, will go under, well, the important thing to realize right now is that the restaurants have. I don't know if you paid attention, through the summer, restaurants were closing because they didn't have staff. They don't have staff, because there's no place for the staff to afford to live, so what's gonna turn, what's going to shut the businesses down? Is lack of service workers, not Airbnb people, and not the lack of Airbnb people. It's, you know, this is an important thing to think about, so we really need to um. thing to think about. So we really need to um, be realistic about what that problem is. And then the other thing is, um, you know, if there are a few shorter, a fewer amount of Airbnbs available, we're not talking about cutting all Airbnbs out of this. This is not a bylaw that says no more Airbnbs, period, like Berlin tried to do. It's not, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about trying to keep speculators from buying up the homes without any, you know, chance for local people to purchase the homes. And that's the problem. That's one of the problems that we really need to be trying to um, prevent from happening here. And then the, um, the really sad thing is watching people being evicted from their homes. I have so many friends that are being evicted from their apartments right here in Great Barrington. And there's no place around, and I have two people working with me. And I said, you guys are really lucky to have apartments. They're not living in Great Barrington, but they're like, yeah, absolutely. There's not, there's a major shortage. We know this, but it's real. It's really real. And the only way they were able to find their apartments is because their worker, their bosses happened to know someone before they put it on the market. So it's not a black and white situation. And it's really important that none of us feel like, oh, it has to be this or it has to be that. This, this requires a lot of thinking, a lot of creative thinking and a lot of like, as someone said, thinking outside the box, but really research, really research.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kathy Plungis. Go ahead, Kathy. You are unmuted. Kathy, you're now muted.
Hi, Kathy Plungis, yes?
Yes.
Okay, Kathy Plungis, six Hebert Drive, Great Barrington. Born and raised here, worked here, raised my family. I'm still here. Um, I'm terribly concerned about this as a resident and forty-three years in my home on Hebert Drive. I could rent it up short-term for a hundred eighty days. If I choose to become a second homeowner, it seems I'm going to be limited up to seventy-five days. Any of our second homeowners have no say in this. They can give their opinions at meetings like this, but it seems we are now going after the second homeowners more and more to squeeze whatever money we can out of them. If we have a potential eighty homes that could possibly come on the market for short-term rentals, I think if we look at the price those homes sold for, we, they would never be renting at a fee low enough for the workforce to be able to rent them. Um, Lee has done a tremendous amount of background work in this, but going after this um, short-term rental is not the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Three more to go. Janice Robins. Just unmute yourself, please, Janice.
Okay, Janice Robbins, one forty-eight Offord Road. I don't know if this is something that's doable at all, but if the concern is people coming in, buying property just as investors going forward, is there any way to put some type of contingency on sales that somebody buying a property could not do short-term rentals for X amount of time, whether it's their first year of ownership or first two years of ownership? And maybe that would dissuade potential buyers who are just looking to purchase for an investment and that maybe would leave more um, homes available for people who are looking to live here. Just a thought.
Thank you very much. Dan Wild.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thanks. Hi, Steve. Hi, Brandy. Um, so my, my big concern is that, that I see short-term rental properties gobbling up long-term rental uh, uh, long, long-term rental properties. And you seem to be talking about short-term rentals and property owners. And my concern is about the lack of long-term rentals. And then having just seen a couple of properties that were brought up and evicted, uh, long-term rented, who, long-term tenants who live here, raise their families here, pay taxes here, and now are, are up, now are panicked, trying to find a place to live. And there are two other properties that I know of where the uh, long-term rental units were converted into uh, single-family homes, uh, and the other is converted into Airbnb uh, revenue properties. I think that we need to do something about uh, uh, restricting something that, that stomps all over the long-term renters who are already here and being evicted. And if we can do something that will prevent multifamily houses from being converted, I think that would be a big move in achieving something uh, uh, that has to do with short-term rentals.
Thank you, Dan. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead. I thought you were done.
And the other thing is, no one has really talked about what the impact of short-term rentals is on a neighborhood. You have people who um, who are coming and going all the time. You don't know who's, who's living next door. If you happen to be in that neighborhood, there's an additional amount of traffic. Uh, it seems to me that that upsets the, the quality and the um, uh, positive tenure of living in community. And that should really be taken into as a factor.
Thank you, Dan. Last would be John L.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. Uh, my wife spoke earlier, so I just want to.
His name and address, please.
Oh, yes. Uh, John Lundner. Uh, my house is at nine Francis Avenue. Uh, I believe I'm just down the road from uh, Ed. Is that correct? Are you familiar with the house, Ed?
I, I don't know which house, but I know where Francis is. It sounds just on the road.
But it's, it's the corner house on Francis Avenue?
Oh, the one nice one that was just fixed up.
Oh, yes. Thank you very much. Um, that was all done with local contractors, obviously. Um, and I'm curious if anybody has spoken to any of the local business owners about these uh, proposed bylaws.
Really, th- this point is just for you to make your comments. We will.
Okay.
We'll put that on a list. We'll put that on a list to talk about at the next meeting.
Okay, I, I just want to make the comment um, that uh, should I have, should these bylaws be enacted? Obviously, my hospitality business would no longer be viable. And that would, again, force me to either sell or rent long-term. If I were to rent long-term, that comes with a whole different set of legal ramifications because in essence, I become a landlord rather than being in the hospitality business. So I just want to make sure that that's, that's clear, that there, that there are many, many different legal ramifications of, of uh, of uh, being a landlord rather than being in the hospitality business. Um, I would say that uh, I've got a four point nine rating out of five on Airbnb, and that factors in value and cleanliness. I don't think that uh, you know, Ed said that the nice house on the corner got fixed up really nicely because it was really a problem. And I don't see how I've negatively impacted the community at all. I think uh, by hiring everybody local, be it the cleaning service, my contractors, my electricians, the garbage service, my gardener. Um, that puts a lot of money into the community. Should I, should these laws be enacted? There's no doubt. I would sell my house and I would fire all those contractors and vendors. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Very much. Garfield, did you have something you wanted to add quickly?
I'll, I'll wait till the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine. So um, right now, we have fifty-three attendees and thirteen panelists, for those keeping track at home. Um, Brandy, I think it's time we adjourn the joint meeting. And you and I will talk uh, when, when we're going to meet again, which will be, I'm sure shortly, but.
Right, I agree. Thank you for coordinating this and, and good luck with your, your further meeting. Appreciate you guys making the time tonight so that we could start this conversation.
Thank you.
All right. So do we need a motion to adjourn?
Good. Can I just make one comment, Brandy, before? It's quick comment. I just want to, I just want to, you know, make it, make everybody aware that if this in fact is going to uh, be prepared for town meeting twenty twenty-two, this needs to move pretty quickly. Because we, you know, we've got public hearings and discussions and stuff to, to take care of. So anyway, that's it.
Yeah. Thank you, Pedro. So um.
I'll adjourn the planning board meeting, or do you want to adjourn?
No, that's perfect.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to adjourn the planning board portion of this meeting. Do I have that motion?
So moved, yes.
Thank you, Pedro. Do we have a second?
Second.
Was that Malcolm seconding? Thank you, Malcolm. Um, so we'll do roll call vote. Jeremy?
Hi.
Malcolm?
Hi.
Jonathan?
Goodbye.
Pedro?
Hi.
Brandy, I thank you again, select board. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, we will start with the select board meeting. We first have, uh, let me just, I should have brought this up. Mark, can we just see that the um, draft bylaw is put onto our website along with any letters that we receive, like we usually do when there's people who are looking for those. And we've received three letters and I didn't read them tonight because they're rather lengthy. And I thought it would be better off if we put them on our website.
Here, we can do that, Steve.
Thank you very much. Um, we are all present. Um, I'm not going to take attendance again. Eric is back. Um, so let's uh, start with approval of minutes, August third, October twelfth, and October twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of August third, October twelfth, and October twenty-fifth.
Second. So I have a motion and a second discussion. All roll call votes. Eric?
Hi.
Garfield?
Actually, was not here for that meeting.
There's three meetings.
Well, for the second, we're talking August.
No, we're doing, we're doing all three. So was it the August one you weren't here for?
Correct.
So you'll recuse the August and vote yes on the two October?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I. Select boards announcement and statements. We will start with Garfield.
I have nothing at the moment.
Thank you. Eric?
Uh, nothing. Thank you.
Ed?
Just only that the minutes have markedly improved. So whoever's taking them over, they're doing a great job.
That's true. Lee?
None.
And I have nothing. Thank you. Um, town managers report.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Uh, first on my list for this evening is the Houston Water Works. Uh, so to begin with, uh, just a reminder that the select board will be meeting in the executive session on uh, November fifteenth to discuss potential options for moving forward. Uh, since the discussion could move in the direction of a property purchase or, and/or litigation in the way of a petition for rate relief through the DPU, it's only appropriate to discuss this uh, under reasons three and six for convening an executive session. Uh, and finally, we're in the process of drafting a survey for Houston Water Works customers. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to announce that publicly this evening. At this point, it's only about eight questions. And the goal here is to create a way for us to find out just how many customers are being impacted by royalty and discolored water. How long has it been a problem for them and where the problems are occurring so that we can start to map those out? Uh, we'll get a finalized version up on our website, on our Facebook page and on Instagram and out uh, in a traditional press release uh, before the week is over. So I just wanted to encourage uh, anyone who is a customer of Houston Water Works to uh, chime in and provide some feedback. Winter parking ban is next on my list. This goes into effect next Monday, the fifteenth. Uh, this means no overnight on-street parking until April first to allow for plowing and snow removal by the public works department. If you do not have access to off-street parking, you can use the upper railroad street lot. You can use the Castle Street Lot, Town Hall, Mason Library, and Houston Community Center. But just keep in mind that uh, cars in these lots could be subject to daytime limitations. And, and these areas also need to be cleared of snow. So use them overnight, of course, but plan to move your car in the morning. The Division Street Bridge, just a quick update for the board and the public this evening. We've cleared our DEP review and we're on to the, or into the final days now of our mass DOT chapter eighty-five review period. So the schedule looks something like this, and I'm just going to zip through some dates uh, really quickly here. We'll be advertising the bid from November twenty-fourth through December first. We have a pre-bid meeting tentatively scheduled right now for December sixteenth, a bid opening scheduled for January thirteenth. And we expect to award, award the contract within a week and sign a contract with the contractor by mid-February. So this keeps us on track for construction uh, sorry, for spring construction and a reopening of the bridge in the summer of twenty twenty-two. Uh, it, it'll be a, a one-lane bridge for anyone that hasn't heard that so far, temporary bridge, and that will remain in place until we find funding for a more permanent replacement. Houston Community Center meeting room is next on my list here. Uh, I just wanted to announce a few updates uh, relative to that building. First, the meeting room has been painted. It's been cleaned out uh, now and it's set up, or being set up as an additional meeting space for boards and committees once we resume in-person meetings. I know we've been talking about this for quite a while now, but there's, there's just been no rush to do it without in-person meetings happening. So I, I hope that will be happening sooner than later, meaning the in-person meetings. Uh, we installed internet service to that building as well, and this will allow us to hold hybrid meetings from that location. And we'll be installing a Wi-Fi booster if one is needed. We, we haven't tested it yet, but if one is needed, we'll be installing that as well. Uh, and our hope here is that the parking lot outside the Houston Community Center uh, will uh, be an area uh, that provides Wi-Fi to those that need it. It's a cell phone dead zone right there. I don't know if anyone's ever tried to make a call or send a text from that area. It's impossible. Uh, so this is another uh, area or location for residents in the village or, or anywhere for that matter, to access free Wi-Fi if they need to. Uh, many of you have probably noticed the signs in town uh, at both libraries, Houston and Great Barrington, mentioning that there's free Wi-Fi available. And we'll do something similar to that once we are up and running, which I expect uh, will be in the next couple of weeks. And then if I could just real quickly add a few more on uh, Houston School, not on my list for this evening. I don't have anything concrete to share, uh, although I hope to at the next meeting. Sean is seeking out additional contractors capable of completing the roof tarp and window boarding work now. He's doing everything he can do to get this building closed up before the snow flies. That's our, our ultimate goal here, and I'll plan to bring this up at the next meeting. And just to conclude my updates for the uh, evening, there's a number of projects underway at the moment in town. I'm sure you've all seen them. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their patience. There's never a good time to disrupt parking, traffic, and make noise, but we are doing our very best to minimize the impacts. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Uh, licenses and permits. Thomas Crissy for permission to install driveway at thirty High Street. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the uh, to give permission to Thomas Keen for, to install a driveway at thirty High Street.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I, it's unanimous. Betsy Andrews, Southern Berkshire Chamber of Commerce for a one-day temporary entertainment license for the annual holiday stroll on Saturday, December eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, from three P M. to eight thirty P M. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve a one-day temporary entertainment license for the annual holiday stroll on Saturday, December eleventh, from three P M. to eight thirty P M. for Betsy Andrews, Southern Berkshire Chamber of Commerce.
Second. Any questions or comments? Second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I. Stephen Hayward for National Grid, a pole petition for Long Pond Road to install one pole in the public public right-of-way approximately five thousand two hundred and fifty feet north of the center line of the intersection of Division Street and above property at two sixty-five Long Pond Road. Let me just see, is he on the line, Mark? Does anyone have any questions before we vote on this?
Steve, just out of abundance of caution, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay. And Steve is on the line. So do you just want to give a brief explanation of this? That would be helpful.
Yeah, Steve here at National Grid. We are looking to install a new pole on the opposite side of the where all the existing poles are along Long Pond Road in that area so that we can provide service to the residence that's being built at two sixty-five Long Pond Road.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve Stephen Hayward's pole petition for Long Pond Road to install one pole in the public right-of-way at approximately five hundred, five thousand two hundred and fifty feet north of the center line of the intersection of Division Street and abut the property at two sixty-five Long Pond Road.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Hearing none. Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hey.
Yes, you. You recused yourself. My apologies. Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
And I. So show it as four to nothing. Thank you very much, Stephen.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Next is Kate Hand. Is there someone here representing either the Farmers Market or Berkshire Cider Project? If there is, please raise your hand. Okay, good. So this is Kate Cat Hand, Berkshire Cider Project for a special farmer winery license to sell hard cider at the grown Farmers Market at the Hoozie Dome, ten sixty-four Main Street, Houston starting on November twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, from ten A M. to two P M. every third Saturday of the month through April, two thousand twenty-two. Do you want to just give a brief explanation?
Sure. Hi, can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Hi, this is Kat from Berkshire Cider Project. So we are a small craft hard cidery located in North Adams. We make a fine hard cider. Everything we do is dry and bottled here in North Adams, and we source locally for the majority of our apples. So we really consider ourselves an agricultural operation, creating a value-add product from local apples. And we're super excited. We've sold at the West Offridge Farmers Market and had a fantastic reception there, and we're really excited to hopefully sell at the Great Barrington Market as well. We'll be selling bottles to go. Obviously, nothing will be consumed on-site, although we do hope to do some small samples for folks who want a just a little taste to see before they buy. But we, you know, we love the Berkshires. We love agriculture in the Berkshires and really hope to be approved.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special farmer winery license to Kate Hand of Berkshire Cider Project.
Second.
Do I have discussion?
How much will be served when you're serving the tastings?
Oh, a sip. We have tiny little sample cups, and it's really just, you know, a quick sip so folks know exactly what they're getting.
So I have a couple of things to say. The Parks Department, which gave the permits for the for the Farmers Market after two meetings and a lot of discussion, never got a chance to vote on this, and it's really the purview of the Parks Department. And it's the final license is from the select board, but the Parks Department does control the Houston County Community Center. And and it's unfortunate that this was never brought to the Parks Department because I think we would have had a very good discussion. And I have some mixed feelings about selling any hard cider products at a kids' gym. I know kids won't. It's not necessarily where kids are, but it just sends a message that it's kind of funny for me, but that's just my personal opinion. Any other discussion? Roll call vote then. Garfield?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Lee?
Hi.
So I vote no, so it's four to one. To move ahead. Thank you, Cap.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you. New business. Cannabis retailer introduction. Mark, you want to help me with this one?
Yeah, I'm gonna start promoting people right now.
Yeah.
If there's anyone else on, I think I have everyone, but if there's anyone else, just raise your hand and then I'll go ahead and open your mic as well.
Yeah, I'm on here, Mark. This is Brandon Pollock, if you can hear me, but would it be possible to share my screen as well just for a short presentation?
Sure.
Absolutely.
And I'm.
Brandon, you should be all set. I just promoted you to be a panelist, so you should be able to turn your camera on and share a screen now.
All right, let's see.
I'm gonna go ahead and actually promote all of you to be panelists so that we can see you.
Yeah, I'm not. Let me get out of Zoom webinar. I'm not quite seeing that for some reason, Mark.
Okay, let me just like look at the settings. Hang on one second.
Yeah.
Want me to bring Brandon to panelist, Mark?
Yeah, he should be already.
There you go. I see it now.
Okay, yeah, you're good. So you should be able to share your screen.
All righty, that that did the trick. So thank you. So essentially, this is Brandon Pollock with with Theory Wellness. Our business is located at three ninety-four Stockbridge Road in Great Barrington. I'm also joined by some of my colleagues here in the cannabis industry. Charlotte with Rebel and Alexander with Farnsworth Fine Cannabis, and we just wanted to reintroduce ourselves and introduce ourselves to the select board. It's been several years since I was last had a meeting with the board and I know there's some new faces, so we we continue to appreciate your your leadership generally and you know, from my from my view, it's been a very successful relationship with the town, and I want to thank Ed in particular for his leadership early on in the the early days of cannabis and really helping, you know, us with our our business and getting going here. So this presentation will just sort of allow us to introduce ourselves, go over a little bit about our businesses, and most importantly, just open up to any questions the select board may have about what we've been up to in the last few years. So I am the CEO, one of the founders of Theory Wellness. We operate, as I mentioned earlier, on Stockbridge Road. We started as a medical cannabis facility here in Great Barrington, and we're we're fortunate with your support to convert to adult-use retail. We opened in January twenty nineteen to all twenty-one-plus adults and have been growing our business since then. We've served customers from all around the world, as you know, well as folks from right down the block. So it's been really good experience overall. I'll turn it now over to to Charlotte.
Hi, everyone, and thank you so much for having us tonight. I'm Charlotte Hannah, and I'm the founder of the parent company is Community Growth Partners, and our retail store here in Great Barrington is called Rebel and on South Main Street, right across the street from Guido's and next to the bagel shop for everybody that knows the the area. And we opened and we were the second dispensary to open after Brandon opened. And we opened in September of twenty twenty, just over a year ago. And and we too have served so many customers from all over the world. It's been amazing to see people come to this great town and and come visit this great community. I mean, we often send people to I was I had was listening to the previous presentation, and you know, we do send people to lots of businesses in the town, and it's been it's been a really great opportunity, opening up my very first cannabis business. As we're a small businesswoman and minority-owned in in Great Barrington in this town. This is, we also have a cultivation operation that we're bringing and manufacturing and and delivery that we're bringing online in Northampton as well. And I've been pretty active. I'm from New York originally, and I'm here every single week. I'm here in the office right now, actually, in Rebel. And I often share stories as I'm getting very active in my home state of New York about legalization, and I'm often talking to to communities about what it's like to go through legalization and and welcome our industry into the town. And and I talk about my experiences here in Northampton all the time. And it's been, you know, so far, a really great experience, opening up my very first business here in town.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll turn it over to Alexander for an introduction as well.
Thank you, Brandon. Hello. So we are Farnsworth Fine Cannabis Company. We're the fourth dispensary to open in town. We are located at one twenty-six Main Street, which is next to Cumberland Farms. And we are occupying the kind of outer skirt of the main kind of main street area of town. And so we have, we purchased a building that was formerly occupied by the Dempseys and did a gut renovation with local contractors. We opened our doors in March two thousand twenty-one of this year, after about two years of the process. And we are family-owned and operated, so I would say we're by far the smallest dispensary in terms of a volume of of all of them, and it's myself, my my older brother Braden Farnsworth, our sister Isabella, and our brother Sterling that run the the business with about twenty others who are mostly local. So we've never you know, hired someone from out of state and flown them in. There perhaps wouldn't have been housing for them anyhow. But we are a team that lives in Great Barrington and in the Berkshires and cares about its its current and its future. And so we're really happy and grateful to be able to be an active member in the business community in Great Barrington.
No. Thank you. So just, you know, a little bit of other information for the board, and we'll get to any questions that the the board might have for us at this point in time, but we just want to talk a little bit about some of the growth and some of the the good things that I think we've we've been up to. We, you know, when we started Theory Under Medical, we had only five, five members of our team. We've grown that now to about sixty employees. Similar, Alexander, we, the the more local, the better. I mean, there's a lot of good reasons for hiring local people, but certainly we've we've believed we've done a pretty good job of that. We've, of course, brought in a lot of tax revenues through the town through both the sales tax that gets applied to Great Barrington, but also just as Charlotte mentioned, there's a lot of other businesses that are seeing customers that maybe otherwise wouldn't have been shopping in in town and then revitalization properties. I can certainly let my colleagues speak for what they've been up to, but our building was built was just a parking lot that was turned into a a building and increased the property value and so forth, and we're really, really proud of that.
Yeah, I'll weigh in just a little bit, too. I mean, I think you know, I guess our our point here is that we hope and we do get feedback from, you know, our neighbors in the in the community and friends that we've made in the community that in general, while people were worried about, you know, the industry coming to town, and that's certainly something I've heard in our outreach meetings. You know, our our hope with this particular point on this slide was to to demonstrate that it actually, you know, hasn't, you know, has been, you know, mostly positive impact on the on the community. And so one example, you know, that I I can share is that we, you know, we bought this property on the south end of town and, you know, put a lot of work into revitalizing it, and and I hope it's a beautiful, you know, a property for people to see as they enter the community from the south end. And we do get a lot of feedback about that, but we also recently had it appraised and you know, the the value is has gone up quite significantly, outpacing even the increase in in property values in the town overall. We know it certainly outpaced that, and I think that that's been a good thing for all of our neighbors to have property values go up. I mean, that's that's, you know, oftentimes, as we were, I heard in the presentation before, most people's primary source of of wealth is in their home. So I'm hoping that, you know, we've helped contribute to that in some positive way, in some small way.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I know Alexander also did full new new renovation, the building. You know, another thing we're proud of is just generally supporting the community. We've probably supported about, you know, at least six or eight different organizations at at this point in time, and we're constantly looking forward to finding more more community partners to support. You know, we're at this point, we're getting great suggestions from our team team members, and hey, I heard about this event or I heard about this organization, and we're really always happy to to support those. I don't know if Charlotte or Alexander have any other any points there and some of the organizations that they've been proud to support?
The, yes, the only caveat would be that our contribution to Rowerishy Youth Projects will be written formally in two thousand twenty-two, March of two thousand twenty-two, as that's our as we get our footing in our first full year of operation.
Yep.
But certainly, you know, we've supported the Film Festival, the the Youth Project, as well as as well as smaller kind of event-based activations within the community.
And I'll just add.
Sorry, Cheryl. I do think it's worth noting for the general audience, too, is that you know, as a cannabis company, there are some restrictions on organizations that we can support. And it's not always as easy as just writing a check or making a donation. Given that the organizations have to you know, have causes that are that are aligned or have audiences that are of a certain age and et cetera. And so I do think that that's worth noting because it's, you know, I know that we all work really hard to make these things actually happen. Whereas other businesses can just kind of sign sign the check and walk away.
Yeah, and if I could just add to that as well, you know, our our positive impact, I think the three of us all agree is really important, well beyond, you know, anything that's required. You know, we want to be a good part of good community members and and so one of the things that we did when we had our, you know, our donation that was due and is required by the, you know, town agreement to volunteers in medicine, we also asked our customers to match our gift. And so we set up at checkout, people could make a contribution. And and so we were able to raise thousands more dollars for volunteers in medicine from eight hundred customers that matched our gift. And I also pay up to twenty hours of for I pay people who are hourly to twenty hours a year for volunteer community service work. And so we were doing a lot beyond, you know, just that required donation and, you know, with volunteers in medicine. And we're, you know, supporting our employees' opportunity to get out there and do more good work in the community.
That's great. That's great. Well, thank you both for that. So that was just a quick, again, presentation, introduction and reintroduction to the board. We, as always, appreciate your support and just wanted to see if there might be any, you know, questions that we can answer at that time about our business here in Great Barrington.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
I do have a question. And you'll please straighten me out where I'm incorrect, but I understand the commitment is five-year commitment for the donation to the town or the the marriage you have with the town as far as money goes. Is that correct?
Yes, there's a five-year host community agreement, Garfield.
Okay, and when that host agreement ends after five years.
We we re we renegotiate. We, we renegotiate.
We'll renegotiate. Okay, that's what I wanted to know, how they felt about the renegotiation.
This is not a business negotiation meeting, this is a, get to, get to know the, the fine folks at these businesses.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, just, you know, when marijuana was first legalized here, my concern was to make sure it was, you know, we approached it orderly, like everyone else, I had one eye on the money. So, you know, a lovely bonus was the property being improved. But really, what I didn't expect is how big a part of the community you guys have been. Uh, the, you know, the three of you and and Donna at Calix, you know, sponsoring local events above and beyond what it is you are sort of agreed to and required to do. Um, so I would just want to thank you all for that. It's been, you know, easy to work with you. You've been, you know, I assume if you, if it weren't so inappropriate, you'd be sponsoring Little League. You know, if you become that kind of community partner, so thank you.
We appreciate it. And again, thank you for your leadership. We, you know, being early was very important in this industry and and you really helped us all get there and that's made all the difference.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. We're, we're glad we get to see a face and and get to know the company that you represent. We really appreciate that.
Well, thanks, everybody, and have, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, next, we have a license agreement for one twenty-three Main Street. Alexander staying on because he's part of this. Kate.
Steve, do you mind if I just provide a real brief?
No, please do.
From a town's perspective.
Yes.
So we were approached and asked to consider a license agreement with Hummingbird House LLC for use of a very small stretch of town-owned land down at the former Getty Station on Main Street, it's one twenty-three Main Street. And in summary, the, the agreement would allow uh, the new leaseholder to improve the area, to reuse the historic signage, remodel or reuse the pump house, repave that area and landscape. Um, so improving, uh, at least from our perspective, a long vacant and blighted property. So, uh, I'll now turn it over to Kate and Alexander to talk about from their perspective.
Thank, thank you, Mark. I don't know, maybe Chris, are you able to put that the plan that actually shows the property line on? I thought that might be helpful for the discussion.
Trying to find a clear version, clearer than what was in the package. Just give me a second.
Okay, while you're doing that, if you don't mind, I'll just keep talking and we'll catch up with that. So for the record, Kathleen McCormick, McCormick, Martin, Marcus, I'm here with Alexander Farnsworth. It's not often that there's such a lovely introduction to my client and the item prior to me being on the agenda. But as you all just heard, Alexander is part of Farnsworth Fine Cannabis. Um, the licensing agreement we're talking about tonight is with an entity called Hummingbird House LLC. And that is the property owner of the, the building that they are in across the street at one eighteen Main Street. So just to keep the ownership of the, the real estate different from the actual cannabis business. But there's a lease between Hummingbird House LLC and uh, high-minded LLC doing business as Farnsworth Fine Cannabis. We're here, and again, similar to what the discussion was before, these entities, the marijuana, retail marijuana establishments have, you know, become partners in the community and they've spent a great deal of thought and energy into revitalizing properties and to leaving a, a positive impact on the town. And when we talk about an area that needed a positive impact across the street from Farnsworth is the old Getty gas station. I think we're all aware of it. It's a pretty blighted and left abandoned site. One of the challenges with the site and the reason I wanted Chris to see if he could put it up on the, on the screen is that the, I'm going to call it the island that the pump house, the old gas pumps and the signage were on, that shows in, in orange there. That is actually all on town property. So though when you drive by, you have the idea that that's part of the, the gas station property. It is all on town property. When, when I say all, the island that has the, that white building, which is the pump house, where Chris's hand is, on either side of it, there were old pumps that were removed. And there's two signage areas in there. My client was able to get in touch and work out a lease deal with the entity that owns that, that space. What their goal is, is to clean up that space. They want to, they're very proud of their building across the street. They're proud of the entry into town from this area and they want to restore that, that space, to clean it up. If you've noticed, there was a little bit of black topping that was done already. What we're looking to do is to have the ability to blacktop and fix uniformly the, the full area, including what we've done and this orange area, which is actually town property. The goal is to clean it up, to restore it to be more of a vintage gas station feel, to use the, the, the signage, the old signage areas for signage for the business. And that Farnsworth Fine Cannabis will use some of that area as parking for their, for their customers as well as for staffing, just to get some more cars off the road. And that, at some point, they're going to work on this, the actual masonry gas station, that's not on town property, but they're going to clean that up. They're going to paint that, make it look a lot better, and they'll be using that for for a business office for the, for the, for the retailer across the street. There is no intent to sell any sort of cannabis products on the site. It is just really to give a facelift, to help revitalize the neighborhood and to use what's there to restore it, to, to make it look, look much better. You know, when we were trying to decide, Alexander and I were trying to come up with a plan. He's got great artistic vision. One of the concerns that we had was the island is a very good separator right there. And so we, we would like to keep that there, but improve upon it, restore it, make it more of a, of a landscaping feature and still keep traffic from, from driving onto this property unless that was the intention to drive onto this property. So we are requesting a license from the town of Great Barrington to use that strip. We've asked for it to go from the date that we were working on this, October tenth, all the way through October tenth of two thousand and twenty-five, just so that we're not in front of you every, every year, since we're going to be putting a, a, a bit of, of money and effort into cleaning it off. We, we're looking for a little longer than a one-year license. Obviously, it's, it's able to be rescinded by either party with seven, seven days written notice, similar to all other licenses in the town. That's basically it. We've had some discussions with Sean Van Duzen of DPW and all work will comply with, with the conditions the town sets up to work on town property. I think that's the scope of the project. If anybody has any questions, I'd, either Alexander or I would love to answer them for you.
Is there any questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, I guess, um, I like the idea of that property being cleaned up, no question about it. When you, when you say landscaping, where the old pumps and everything were, what, what exactly do we have in mind? Is it, are you gonna put the, refix the old structure or are we talking like pollinators and?
Well, so right, our goal right now, so we're, we're, um, we're under a lease, the landlord would like, of the space, would like us to to keep what's there and to fix, to fix that up, to fix any structural on the pump house, I call it the pump house, I'm not sure, the pump building, and to keep that there. The goal would be either to, we have to look at some of the structural integrity and see what the project is. You know, the couple of things that we talked about was we would potentially put a bench there with some plantings. You know, there's a really nice park on that, on the side of the street, right next to this, this property, which really doesn't have much else on that side of the road. So, you know, just to kind of tie in a flow, we know it's a, a traffic area, so do you really want to, to sit there? But the, the goal would be to keep the island, keep it so that it's a buffer between the road and the building. It wouldn't be planting permanent gardens, but maybe some, some potted plants to, to, just to make it a little softer there and to fix that pump house. But we are still determining exactly the best course of action for the pump house. It, I can tell you that we would like to leave those, leave the lighting, because it's a vintage lighting look. Make sure every, get the, we don't know if those, if those lights are operational, but we would like to get them operational. And to, you know, reuse that little area for some signage, as well as the other Getty sign that you can see in that picture. But that, I didn't really talk much about that, because that's actually on the property of the Getty Station. That's not the town property. So really, the broken-up pavement area that you can see in this picture and that island full of weeds, the two lights in the pump house are on town property.
Other questions? Go ahead, Eric.
I guess, yeah, Steve, this might be more directed at you. But as far as like Kate's mentioned, reuse of signage, right now, we're just debating about the use of the land and the signage is a whole different issue in the future, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, if I could just address that, I have spoken with Ed May. So we have talked about kind of signage, signage obviously would have to be a, a, a different application that we would have to go and do the, go through sign permitting, just like in the bylaw. But this would allow us to use, if, if we do get through the, the sign permitting, it would allow us to use that, those signs that are on that property.
The, the two locations that are on those light poles on the island, basically, that's why. Yes, okay.
Anyone else?
It's curious if you have any further plans other than offices in that area.
Uh, no, just part, well, Alexander, why don't you answer that question?
Yeah, well, i- if I could say, the, um, we were able just to, to get an electrician into the gas station. We got the utilities connected, so we know that that power works. In terms of the other signage, we don't even know if, if power still goes to that part on town property. In terms of the future of the building, understand that we are entering into, or we have entered into a lease agreement with the owner of the building. So it's not a property that we are purchasing, because the owner wants an exorbitant amount for it. So our goal is to give it curb appeal to really solidify the area as, as a place where you would have a, a fine cannabis shop. So long-term plans beyond the office, no, we're not, we're not currently looking to open another building there. Sorry, I meant another business there of, of, of any sort at the moment. But we'll use the, you know, mostly the exterior of the space.
Anyone else? Do I have a motion? Lee, you're muted.
Sorry, I had loud teenagers in the background. I make a motion to approve the license agreement between the town of Great Barrington and Hummingbird House LLC, as detailed in the agreement.
We have a motion in a second. There's one person who's raised their hand, so allow them to talk. Mr. Diaz. Just unmute yourself, state your name and address. You are muted. Well, he's waiting to unmute. It's any other questions by the board? He doesn't seem to be able to unmute himself. Okay, roll call vote, Garfield.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next is a discussion on civil service in the Great Barrington Police Department, Mark.
Sure. So, Steve, if you could promote Chief Storey. In the meantime, this is a topic that I'm really pleased to be discussing this evening since we started this conversation two years ago during our collective bargaining sessions. Hiring and promoting police officers has always been a challenge for the town, or has been for a very long time anyway. Made only more challenging with civil service requirements. So Chief Storey is here to present a proposal tonight to the board for eliminating uh, and offering up some alternative hiring policies for initial hires and promotions. So go ahead, Chief, it's all you.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me this time today. As, as you've probably experienced over the last several years, the police department has really struggled to fill vacancies in a timely, efficient manner, which in turn creates collateral effects as far as the services that we can, that we can provide to the community. Currently, the civil service system manages the hiring and promotional process for for towns in which fall under their jurisdiction. Prior to post in June or July first of two thousand and twenty-one, they also handled disciplinary matters. But the establishment of the Post Commission took over that function of civil service. So civil service right now is only handling the hiring and promotional process. The exam for civil service hiring entry-level employees, police officers, is given every two years. They give the test in the spring, the results don't come out for several months after that. So for example, this year it came out in, the test, I think, was in May and we didn't get the results until September. What we have seen over the last several exams that have been given is that we don't get many people from this area. I'll even say Great Barrington and even the surrounding towns. We're only getting a handful of candidates to choose from. Everyone else is out east or east of us here. This last test, civil service provided me with sixteen names. And of those sixteen names, only three were residents. One was from just outside Great Barrington jurisdiction, but the other fifteen were from out east. And no one signed the list to even be interviewed for that process. So then I looked at the extended list of civil service. So if I wanted to call for an extended list for more, for more names to try to get more candidates, I went to approximately a hundred down the list and they're all from out east. Civil service had its purpose many, many years ago, but it's really handcuffing us and me to run and hire and promote efficiently for the town. Currently, there's only three towns in Berkshire County that remain in civil service. That's us, Dalton and Pittsfield. Um, I have not spoken to the Pittsfield chief yet about any future plans, but I did have a conversation with the Dalton chief. And it's definitely on their radar also to be removed from civil service. I provided and put together a pretty extensive packet for everybody to read. I worked hard with the union. I did an informational meeting with all the membership of the police department to explain to them what my goal and what the benefits would be. And I was able to obtain their support and working directly with them. I also came up with a pretty comprehensive personnel hiring policy. Uh, it's a draft policy, um, but we're, we've worked together on it, so we're both the union membership and um, the command staff are pretty comfortable with what we uh, put together, and also um, another policy for the promotional process and how that would look. Um, hopefully you got those in your packet and had an opportunity to review them. Um, what we did was I tried to take the good stuff about civil service, the things that do work to make it, you know, fair and um, o- objective and take that and, and build from that and put together policies that um, really give us uh, a more comprehensive hiring practice and promotional practice that we currently use. Uh, so I'm looking for your support. Um, I anticipate um, a couple openings possibly in the near future. And if that's the case, um, it won't be until September of, of two years, so September of twenty twenty-three, before I'll even have a list to choose from any candidates. Um, also like with the, the vacancy of sergeant, just, just to give you an example of how hard it is to, to manage in the, the layers that they put, uh, we, we offered the Promotional Assessment Center for the Sergeant's position uh, September twenty-ninth of this year, and I still have not got a certified list of, from civil service to go ahead and make that appointment. Um, I've, I've tried calling them to expedite it and um, I'm not getting um, any, any assistance with that. So I would love to answer any questions. Um, like I said, I, I, I did a lot of research and I just think at this time um, for the town, for the police department, it's the best way to move forward, to be able to fill those vacancies, so we can do the job um, without forcing people to work and have the people to, you know, um, do the, the projects that I want them to do in, in the community. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief. Uh, Mark, do you want to just talk about the process to do this?
Sure, so uh, the Chief's here tonight really to present this publicly for the first time and open it up for uh, discussion and questions. What we will do with board support uh, is bring this forward to the annual town meeting. Uh, we have to unravel this the same way that we uh, that we put it into place back in the nineteen thirties. Uh, so ultimately, the, the voters are legislative body will make the, the call, but uh, it's up to this board to decide whether to bring this forward and place it on the warrant for twenty, or twenty twenty-two town meeting.
Any questions of Chief, or do I have a motion? I don't hear any questions. Do I have a motion? So you're muted again, Lee. Or still?
I make a motion to accept the terms of the civil services laid out by Chief Storey.
Second. Do I have any discussion?
Just that, you know, this is something I knew almost nothing about. Um, and it was the clearest, concisest, if that's a word, explanation. So thank you, Chief. It was really clear and easy to follow.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd like to echo that. Thank you very much, Chief Storey, for all your research on this and for clarifying a lot of points that were unclear to me before tonight. Thank you.
A- a- and I do, we're gonna see a, a financial impact too, you know, without the overtime, if we can keep our staffing levels and don't have to wait. Um, there's a lot of benefits to it. I think the time is right, and I, I really hope I can get your support for this.
So we have a motion and a second, a roll call vote, Garfield.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Next, we have the two thousand twenty-two town meeting election calendar. Uh, Jen is on the line.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay. Um, so, um, I know you guys got a little bit of a, um, a last minute addition, um, you wanted to look at possibly doing the annual town meeting in June as well as an alternate. Um, so the original one, the original schedule you would have gotten would have had um, the annual town election and annual town meeting both in May. Um, so that would have been, the town meeting would have been Monday, May second, and the second night if needed, um, Thursday, May fifth, and the town election for Tuesday, May tenth, um, which is the usual schedule. That's the usual schedule to have town meeting the first Monday in May and the town election the second Tuesday in May. Um, and then we also added on um, an alternative to have uh, the annual town meeting in June. Um, and so that would have been to have it um, tentatively from Monday, June sixth and a second night if needed, uh, Thursday, June ninth. So I'm not sure, I, I know, Steve, that you were kind of tossing around the June date. Um, so I'm not sure if you guys have any questions about the calendar um, or anything.
The, the point of that was to actually approve both of those tonight. If COVID is still an issue, it's gonna be an issue, but if it's still an issue that we can't go indoors, the early May date may be a little bit cold to be in the parking lot, and so if we as a board decide in either early April or March that we want to go outdoors and we want to do it in June, we'll have the dates reserved with the school, with a moderator, and everyone will know the dates will be completely transparent. That was just the point of that. Any questions?
Steve, I, I got a, just a random question here. I was noticing uh, last town meeting season that um, several towns do them on a Saturday. Have, have we ever given that any thought? I'm not saying that it would be better, I'm just curious if there's been a debate uh, over that at any time for Great Barrington.
Uh, Mark, go ahead.
Chime in. I believe our uh, charter requires us to have a town meeting on the first Monday in May. We've had to uh, look for alternatives the last two years because of COVID, but uh, we could consider that, of course, it would require charter change though.
We've used the emergency provision because of COVID to move it to a Monday. Any one, any other questions? Does you have a motion to accept the town meeting election calendar as amended?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Discussion. And the amendment, just anyone listening, is the June sixth and June ninth alternate um, town meeting date. A roll call vote, Garfield.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Uh, Ed.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous.
Um, Steve?
Yes.
I just have a question. Um, so do you about, have an idea about when you would make a firm decision about the June date?
How late can we go in your mind?
Um, well, I would say, I would say probably you definitely should need to know sometime, I would say by the beginning of March, at the very latest.
So then we will decide by either the um, end of February or beginning of March. You, you drive the bus on this one.
Um, I, I would say probably by the end of February, we should, that way we'd, it'd be on the, the safe side.
It will be on the agenda for the last meeting in February.
Okay.
I, I would also just like to add real quick before we move on, we did send these potential dates to uh, Michael Wise, our moderator and to the school district, so we haven't heard any um, any reason that these, so, these dates won't work, so I think we're good to go.
Perfect. Jen, you're still on for electioneering during early voting and absentee voting for all elections.
All right, so this item, um, just to kind of sum it up from the executive summary, it's basically the same thing as what is on Election Day. Um, so when people are required to be a hundred, at least a hundred and fifty feet away from the entrance of the polling location at both of them. Um, it's the same thing as, the same concept as that, except it's just during the early voting period. So basically, when people are coming to the town hall to do early voting, um, the same, if you adopt this, it'll be the same thing um, that people will need to be at least a hundred and fifty feet away with any of the, the signs for campaigning and things like that, or even for any kind of um, like, you know, signs stuck in the ground, anything like that. Um, and obviously, the locations um, that I gave for the hundred and fifty feet would be the corner of Castle and Main, which is the, the north side corner um, across the street on the sidewalk in front of Wheeler and Taylor and the sidewalk, the sidewalk on the south side of the Hellman Shurm and Arianti Building um, at three forty-two Main Street. So those are the closest places that people would be able to um, do any campaigning during early voting or in-person voting up at town hall.
Thanks, Jen. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept um, those um, details as stated by Jen Messina.
Second.
And that, that's explicit in the um, in the elec- electioneering during early and absentee voting for all elections, that was in our packet. So I have a motion, a second discussion. Saying none, Garfield.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next, parking limits for the holiday season, November twenty-sixth through December thirty-first. Mark, do you want to give us a little brief overview?
Sure, so uh, for the past two years, this board has lifted time limits for parking downtown from the day after Thanksgiving until New Year's Day, at least for periods less than twenty-four hours. Uh, so I just wanted to bring this before the board tonight to see if you'd like to consider doing that again as a way to uh, encourage folks to uh, shop downtown, eat downtown, and visit Great Barrington during the holiday season.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept uh, as detailed um, by the town manager in regards to parking.
Sorry, second.
So that's the parking limits for November twenty-sixth through December thirty-first. Um, discussion, questions? Saying none, Garfield.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Ed.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
And I, it's unanimous. Uh, approval, approval of bond sale.
Steve, before we move on, can I just mention one thing about parking? Uh, I just, after doing this now for a couple of years, I just thought it might be a good idea to mention to everyone, remind everyone uh, that parking within the lines, the strike lines, parking in handicap spots or in otherwise restricted areas will still be enforced. It's, it's not a free-for-all. Uh, we will still be enforcing parking, it's just that we won't be enforcing the two-hour, four-hour, and so on parking limits.
Thank you for the clarification. Uh, approval of bond sale. Is Alicia on? Is she going to lead this, or you, Mark?
Alicia is not on, unfortunately. She just sent me a text and said she was unable to make it. Uh, so I'm sorry, I won't be able to answer questions tonight. Uh, this is a, a bond sale to fund capital projects previously approved by uh, town meetings.
Is there any questions that would preclude us from voting on this? I don't see any questions, so do I have a, a motion?
I make a motion that the board approve and confirm the sale of the two-point.
Lee, I have some bad news for you.
Say to that.
Yeah, uh, I, even without Alicia here, I know that it's got to be read into the minutes.
Oh, okay. Uh, okay, so the hold.
The whole two and a half pages.
Oh, goodness. Okay. All right, I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Great Barrington, Massachusetts, the town certified that a meeting of the board held November eighth, twenty twenty-one, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear on the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below is hereby determined pursuant to General Law Chapter forty-four, seven-one to be as follows. Uh, date amortized, May sixth, two thousand eighteen, Article seven, Purpose, Transfer Station Motor and Railing, Borrowing Amount fifty thousand dollars, Maximum Useful Life, eleven years. Dated June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, Article eight, Wastewater Service Truck, Borrowing Amount seventy-six thousand six hundred, Maximum Useful Life, seven years. Further voted that the sale of the two million eight hundred and twenty thousand, two million eight hundred and twenty thousand general obligation municipal purpose loan of twenty twenty-one bonds of the town dated November seventeenth, twenty twenty-one to Piper Sandler and Company at the price of three million one hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and sixteen and ninety-one cents and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on November fifth fifteenth of the years, and in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as followed. Year twenty twenty-two, amount three hundred and ten thousand, interest rate five percent. Year twenty twenty-eight, amount two hundred and five thousand, interest rate two percent. Year twenty twenty-three, amount three hundred thousand dollars, interest rate five percent. Year twenty twenty-nine, amount a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, interest rate two percent. Year twenty twenty-four, amount two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, uh, interest rate five percent. Year twenty thirty, amount one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, interest rate three percent. Year twenty twenty-five, amount two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, interest rate five percent. Year twenty thirty-seven, amount six hundred and five thousand, interest rate two percent. Year twenty twenty-six, amount two hundred and twenty-five thousand, interest rate five percent. Year twenty forty-one, amount sixty thousand dollars, interest rate two percent. Year twenty twenty-seven, amount two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, interest rate five percent. Further voted that the bonds maturing on November fifteenth, twenty thirty-seven, and November fifteenth, twenty forty-one shall be subject to mandatory redemption or mature as follows. Term bond due November fifteenth, twenty thirty-seven. Year twenty thirty-one, amount a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Year twenty thirty-two, amount a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Year twenty thirty-three, uh, amount a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Year twenty thirty-four, amount a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Year twenty thirty-five, amount a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Year twenty thirty-six, amount fifteen thousand dollars. Year twenty thirty-seven, amount fifteen thousand dollars, and that represents maturity. Term bond due November fifteenth, continue, oh, yeah, continue. Year twenty thirty-eight, amount fifteen thousand dollars. Year twenty thirty-nine, amount fifteen thousand dollars. Year twenty forty, amount fifteen thousand dollars. Year twenty forty-one, amount fifteen thousand dollars, which represents maturity. Further voted that in connection with the marketing sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated, dated October twentieth, twenty twenty-one and a final official statement dated October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted. Further, that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such, such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the town treasurer and the select board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen, Chapter two dash twelve, in such form as may be approved by bond council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further, the, further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance, uh, issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond council deemed sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds and to comply with relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the bonds, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail and a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature to such document, and electrics, uh, signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all matters relating thereto, having the same legal, legal effect as original signatures. Further voted that each member of the Further voted that each member of the select board, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such act actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined, may be to be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certified that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public and that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda include the adoption, adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously uh visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building, municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in nine forty CMR twenty-nine dot oh three two B. At least forty-eight hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Law Chapter thirty A, uh, eighteen dash twenty-five as amended, dated November 8th, 2021, clerk of the select board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Garfield.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Ed.
Hi.
Lee.
Hi.
And I, it's a unanimous vote. Thank you. Citizens, speak time. Seeing no one, uh, select board time. Uh, Garfield.
I'm nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Ed.
Nothing.
Lee.
I think I just put all the citizens to sleep.
Our participants didn't go down dramatically during that, but that's. Thank you, Lee. Uh, media time. Seeing no media, by unanimous consent, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, thanks, Lee.
Thank you. Good night.